Good afternoon and welcome to the November 19, 2020 Board of Trustees Meetings for the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. The meeting is being held with all trustees appearing remotely, and we will proceed as we normally do. Welcome to the meeting. The first thing we will do is join in the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of our country. So if you'll join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice Thank you. Next item is roll call. We have a quorum. We have trustees Snyder, Cross, Ingram, Cook, and Lawson present by Zoom on the webinar. Trustee Smith Everett will not be able to join us tonight. So we do have a quorum. We have no awards and recognitions tonight. The next item is the open forum. The open forum is a period on every regularly scheduled board meeting in which members of the public can make comments to the board. We have that at each regular meeting. Speakers are limited to five minutes unless there is a significant number of speakers, at which point the chair may reduce their time limit to three minutes. During that time, speakers are asked to be respectful and civil and to not address in the public forum items of a personnel or student privacy matter. As a general rule, the board does not respond in these settings to items that are being handled through other board procedures or board policy. Tonight, we have no registered speakers. As we've done in the past, and as a reminder to the public, if you need to register for the December meeting, you should do so the Wednesday before the meeting, the night before the meeting by 5:00 PM. Register at jccc.edu. That moves us on to our board reports, and the first board report would be from the Student Senate. Student Senate President Sailor Usher. Sailor, are you with us tonight?
Yeah, hello.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. So the update with the Student Senate is that we're continuing to do everything virtually, and everybody is very proficient with Zoom now, but we're also kind of zoomed out. So we're trying to pull it all back in and all of our meetings. The Student Senate welcoming new Senator Mahalat Malagida. We thank her for joining and look forward to collaborating on Senate projects. We also have a club update. The HAM Radio was approved just last week or last two weeks ago. It stands for Home Amateur Mechanic Radio Club. Thanks to the founder, Matthew Zeus, for getting that ball rolling, and the club's interested in helping members earn HAM Radio certification. And I think that there's some HAM radios at the college actually that they're going to be able to use eventually, maybe not this semester. Then the Veterans Club also has a couple of events. Reach Across America is going on. I can send links to that later. And they have a Krispy Kreme doughnut sale. It's a cool way to do a fundraiser during everything that's going on. Then the last update is JCCC Gives. We have gift donations available for this fundraiser or this project that are going to be open until December 2nd, and I can share links to that as well. And monetary donations will be accepted until December 18th. We're giving out around 100 gifts total, and we've got a good amount of them already done. We have 40% of them. So we're hoping to wrap that up pretty soon in the next few weeks. We're doing a silent auction that'll end, I think, we originally said it was going to end Friday, but I think we might be ending it a little early on Thursday. But yeah, thanks. That wraps up everything up for me.
Thank you very much, and thank the Student Senate and the clubs for all you do, particularly around the holidays. I know we had an email to the Board of Trustees regarding the Johnson County Community College Holiday Tea opportunity to support charitable causes during the holiday season. We also have a link to JCCC Gives, and I know each board member will take that into consideration with their holiday donation. So thank you Sailor. Questions for Sailor? Let me know if you have questions. The only trustees I can see on the screen are trustee Cook and trustee Cross. So if you're otherwise, try to raise your hand, and I'll try to pay attention. If there are no other questions, Sailor, thank you. Good luck with finals. I think when we see you next, you will be done with your finals successfully. All right. Thank you Sailor for that report. The next item is a report from our colleague lobbyist, Dick Carter. Thank you, Dick, for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you should have received a couple of updates from me. One was earlier in the month, an election update, and then just some comments that have occurred since the elections on November 3rd. And so I'll just capsulize some important events that have either occurred or will be occurring. Budget matters have improved in the state of Kansas fairly significantly. The consensus revenue estimating group met on November 6th, and they revised the fiscal year '21 ending balance to $363 million in the positive and the FY '22 ending balance at a negative $152 million. You'll recall that the concern had been since April, that was the last round of consensus revenue estimating numbers that were produced. We were projecting a $1.4 billion deficit by the end of fiscal year '22. I think a lot of things have occurred. That estimate was made during the top of the pandemic, at least we thought it was at the time, and there were so many unknowns as a lot of people were off work, at home. A lot has improved since then. Employment rates have improved. I think the influx of CARES Act money into the state's economy has also played a role in what those positive numbers look like. The Governor's Budget Office is already working on the budget recommendations for the upcoming legislative session, and the Legislative Budget Committee will meet the first part of December to continue its review and formulation of recommendations that it will forward to its committee, the House Appropriations and Senate Ways and Means Committee, for developing a budget for FY '22. The election results have tightened up in the House. Two of those very close races were in Johnson County. District 16, Lynda Featherstone, won over Richard Young by 62 votes. In District 48, Jennifer Day won over Terry Frederick by 67 votes. And then in Hutchinson, Jason Probst, who's the incumbent, and I should also reflect that Jennifer Day is the incumbent in District 48. She was appointed at the very tail end of the session before things went haywire this past year. Jason Probst was over John Whittsville by 31 votes. Each one of those races at one point were in single or low double digits. That makes the House have 86 Republicans and 39 Democrats. 84 is the magic number to override a governor's veto. We still have yet to see how those 86 will unfold once they hit Topeka. You can get a pretty good idea in some cases, but it depends on the issue. There was one race in the Senate that was somewhat close, but yesterday, the Board of Canvassers in Riley County and in District 22 finished counting the provisional ballots. That race was between Senator Tom Hawke and Craig Bowser. At the end of the election on the 3rd, Senator Hawke was leading by about 300 votes, maybe a little more, but there were 1,400 military and mail-in ballots that still had yet to be counted. Senator Hawke did retain his seat. That brings the Senate to its original number that it was last year, 29 Republicans and 11 Democrats. There are going to be some Board of Tax Appeal changes. That's an issue that we watch pretty closely, given the number of property tax appeals in Johnson County. Sedgwick County also has a large number of those types of tax appeals. Robin Marks of Fairway is an appraiser. He was originally appointed in the spring. The legislature signaled that it wasn't necessarily supportive. The Kansas Chamber was definitely working against that appointee. He will be up again for review with the Legislative, the Confirmation Oversight Committee. And then Ron Mason, an attorney from South Central Kansas area, will retire when his appointment expires on January 13th, 2021. So still changes there. That is one of the most difficult appointed positions to fill, simply based on the criteria required for each one of those board members that sits on that Board of Tax Appeals. Looking forward to 2021 and some of the legislation, I've put a list in the report that you would have received this week, and I'm just going to focus on the Higher Education Bills. We know that we will see a bill that reflects very similar wording to the concurrent enrollment bill we had last session, as well as College Now, which is the last dollar free college for folks that have completed the FAFSA. And then there will be a bill that comes out on community college mergers. It's interesting. This one's going to get interesting because at the last Future of Higher Education Committee meeting, our own trustee Nancy Ingram read a statement indicating that KACC would oppose such legislation. That bill, or rather, that topic was read in for our first reading at the Board of Regents meeting yesterday, and President Flanders acted like he had never heard of any opposition from community colleges, and even Regent, now I'm forgetting names. Regent Hutton was quite surprised that no one had mentioned that there was opposition. And so that's going to be somewhat of a controversial issue. We can't quite figure out why that messaging is going on from the leadership at the Board of Regents. Finally, I guess, a couple of points. The Legislative Coordinating Council met today. That's the group of legislative leaders that talk about administrative issues that regard the legislature when it's not in session. And part of their conversation focused on what will the session look like in 2021. As close as we are, January 11th is not that far away. There are still a tremendous amount of unknowns. It's unknown how many people will be admitted to the Capitol, how many will be allowed in committee rooms or in legislative offices for visits, whether or not there are any constitutional issues that require a legislator to vote in the Capitol building versus from a remote location. It's going to have a very partisan start as far as what some of the protocols will look like, and so that's very concerning as we get ready to approach the upcoming legislative session. We'll know a little bit better what leadership results look like. The legislature will convene in Topeka on December 7th, where they elect their own leadership. So the Senate will have a whole new leadership. There's several candidates that are running for Senate President, Senate Majority Leader, Vice President. We will have a new minority leader in the Senate as well. It's looking like things in the House will be very similar to what it's been for the past several years. So I don't see a whole lot of change in leadership necessarily in the House. Not saying there couldn't be some that mounts, but that's kind of where things are at right now. So by the time we gather next month, we'll know a little bit better what some of the direction looks like for the legislative process in 2021. Hopefully, we'll know a little bit more about what the protocol looks like, and we'll certainly have been signaled by then what some of the priorities are for both bodies. Mr. Chair, I would stop there and see if there's any questions.
I'm going to call each trustee by name and see if you have any questions. Vice Chair Snyder?
No questions.
Frasier Cross?
No questions.
Secretary Ingram?
No questions.
Trustee Cook?
No questions.
Trustee Lawson?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dick. We'll move on to our next report. Dr. Jim Leicher, the President of the Faculty Association. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. So good evening. My report tonight has a singular focus, starting with a study referenced in the Chronicle of Higher Education, to which I know some of you subscribe. The authors of that study, published in the Journal of the National College Testing Association, concluded, and I quote, "That it's imperative to establish a culture and expectation around the purpose of testing and assessment that incorporates the impact of academic dishonesty, and that such efforts need to address the perception of higher education today as transactional in nature and of the need to get good grades as more important than the acquisition of knowledge." I raise this as a reminder that faculty's role as guardians of academic standards is just as and in some ways more important than our roles as content experts and facilitators of learning. Unfortunately, it's a role that carries few rewards. The fastest route to popularity, manifest in praising comments on Rate My Professors or in a class that quickly fills, is to get a reputation as never giving tests and never giving a failing grade. Since going into pandemic mode last spring, instructors nationwide have been making compromises in those standards to keep classes running in formats that they typically would not. 2020 has been a boom year for the algorithmic proctoring industry. The New York Times reports that the business of online administered exams increased 900% in April alone. At that time, the only proctoring software available at JCCC was UGIB, which records students while they take exams, provided they select the right features as directed and that they have stable internet service and a good webcam. Other options have come available to us since, but while technology advances our ability to ensure honesty, it also does the opposite. Instructors right here have seen screenshots of their tests with answers appearing on subscriber pay websites the very next day. It's easy to get passive and assume the IT people will miraculously find a solution. However, I'd rather the college not be naive and choose to see testing as an educational issue and not a technological one. Since March, we've had opportunities as a profession to assess the assessments, and what we're finding is pretty scary. If you're a student taking an algorithmically proctored exam, here's how it works. Depending on the company that made the software, it will record your computer's camera, audio, and any websites you visit. It can track facial recognition, measure body movements, do room scans, anything that alerts the professor to possible misconduct. Besides the privacy concerns, it disadvantages students who will be interrupted by pets, small children, or medical conditions that require them to leave the room during a test. There's evidence that because of lighting issues, students of color are flagged as suspicious more often than white ones. So this may have you asking, why continue to give tests? Because some disciplines require it. Some lend themselves well to alternative kinds of assessment, like a paper or a service project, but others don't. The guidelines of the American Mathematical Association of Two-Year Colleges, for example, require that regardless of delivery method, at least two exams per course be administered in face-to-face settings where the student's identity can be verified. For years, I followed that practice in my own online classes, and for obvious reasons, lately, my fellow historians and I have had to adjust. It's not so easy for quantitative-based fields like math and science. Those are really the gatekeeper courses, classes like calculus and chemistry, which are populated by aspiring nurses, pharmacists, and engineers. Some of those people come to JCCC exactly because our standards are known at Truman and KU Med. They also come because of the flexibility that until recently we were able to provide. For the two decades I've taught here, the college's centralized testing center has been an important part of the way our academic branch functions. Since March, faculty have scrambled to find alternative testing methods like the kinds I've described to avoid bringing people to campus. We understood these measures to be a flawed but temporary response to a crisis. At a recent meeting of the ABC, a permanent change was announced that following our eventual return to campus, the testing center would no longer proctor exams except for makeups or for special accommodations. This was framed as a correction to a bad practice, faculty shifting responsibility for their own proctoring needs onto testing center staff. I'll be the first to admit that the lines at the center could be quite long, and speaking for myself, I always found the staff there courteous and professional, trying to do stressful jobs during peak times. However, I'm going to correct the correction here that this was never about faculty's needs but students. Let me share the experience of a student in Brenda Edmund's Calculus I class, an ER nurse who wanted to become a doctor and needed the course for medical school. This student worked 12 to 14-hour shifts in three-day intervals that changed every week, took online calculus during the off periods, and took exams in the testing center at times that fit with an erratic schedule. That is the norm of the students we deal with. The flexibility was there for them. Under the new rules, proctored exams can only be required under a face-to-face or hybrid format administered by the professor during limited class time or during a special exam period scheduled months in advance, all of which makes it unlikely that students like this will probably not take calculus from us in the future. This raises long-term workload concerns also. Even if we assume George Orwell was a paranoid fool and doing surveillance of students in their private spaces is okay, do you know how many hours of video watching it takes for a professor to check five classes a semester for cheating? I guarantee you someone in the math department does. Calculating is what they do. Right now, departments and divisions are trying to solve this problem by creating de facto testing centers at micro levels. Other instructors are asking themselves, what content will they cut and which objectives will be discarded in order to find additional time for in-class testing? I guess we'll figure this one out because we have to, but my question though is, why do we have to? If there was a better example of administration providing an essential service that maximized instructional time, helped maintain standards known throughout the metro area, and said to faculty, "We know student success depends on a culture of academic honesty, and we are your partners in achieving it," I'm hard-pressed to think of one. If the rules and limits that were implemented over a year ago to make the testing center more effective were not working, that was a conversation we should have had. If the resources were not there to keep the center operating at a level on which we had come to depend, then we have accountants in the business division who would have been glad to go over the books with you. What my colleagues and I don't understand is that with all the new structures in place to improve shared governance, a decision like this was reached without a more thorough and public search for alternatives. To use language I've never really liked, but I guess I'm supposed to be getting used to it, the impacted stakeholders were not included. We believe that was a mistake. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Leicher. Are there questions for Dr. Leicher? Dr. Bound, do you have any comments?
Yes, just, I appreciate the concerns that are being raised. We have a responsibility as an institution to ensure the integrity of the courses that we offer and the assessments we use to ensure that students are doing their own work and presenting it appropriately. At the same time, we've got to come up with a solution that works for students, that works for faculty, and that works for the staff in the testing center. And so you have my commitment to find a solution, and this has been a stressful issue for everyone, and so I want to reinforce the work of our testing center and reinforce the important work as well of our faculty. Thanks.
Jim and Dr. Leicher, the comment I would make is that in my now nine years on the board, I'm not sure any decision that has been made is ever permanent, as you described it, and I appreciate Dr. Bound's commitment to continue to work on this particular issue. Again, I agree with you. I think we have the same goal. There may be different ways to achieve it, but we ought to all be pointing in that direction. So we'll keep working on that one.
If your message is that the decision was not permanent and there are still solutions to be found, then I will go away tonight a happy man.
Well, I don't think any decision's permanent. I think Dr. Bound just indicated they're going to be, continue to work on this effort. So I think, I trust his word. Any other questions for Dr. Leicher? I guess just raise your hand rather than go through a roll call. Or just speak up.
We have a question.
Okay.
I'm not sure the protocol. I'm happy to talk, Mr. Chair. Professor Leicher, what are our alternatives? I listened, you may have listed them, I don't recall hearing them, but, well, I don't want to be a judge. Judges frequently look at me and they say, "Mr. Cross, what are the alternatives? What are we supposed to do? What are our options? And what's the solution here? Do we have solutions mapped out? Do we have..." I take Dr. Bound at his word also. He's a good man. I know it's a difficult time. I've gotten a lot of emails, calls, texts. I get it's a deal. I just wanted to put language to that thought. But I also deeply respect you and your colleagues, and so I'm just asking, what are our alternatives?
Under the present understanding, the best we're able to do is to try to replicate the success of the testing center at department levels. I can think of two departments that are trying to find ways by which colleagues could declare a class a hybrid, schedule rooms a few months in advance, and set aside large windows of testing time. So that might be done within a particular department rather than institution-wide. I'm also hearing from faculty that that's an unfeasible kind of approach. We do have a group that's looking into whether that can all be accommodated through our software system that we use for scheduling. Like I said, there are others who are simply trying to find ways to cut content from a 15-week semester, which this year, remember, was something new for us, going from 16 to 15 weeks, to make more time for in-class testing. There are probably other options, but frankly, I think the best one would be to make it a resource question. So universally, what I'm hearing from faculty is that the testing center was an essential service, and if it needs more staff, if it needs more space, then why aren't we looking at that? That's the option that I would prefer, but I don't control the purse strings.
So let me understand, is it more time now for faculty or less? The way we're doing it currently, is it more time?
You mean the way we did it before COVID?
Yes.
Prior to COVID, there were faculty members who were giving somewhere between two to five or six, perhaps more, exams in a semester, and they would use the testing center for that service. If you want to continue to test with that same kind of bigger, under the current rules, then that's going to mean using time out of the three hours a week for that purpose. Now again, it's possible that some collective solution might be found at a department or division level. We're thinking about that. We don't know yet. So this is going to be a matter of more time for the faculty. Even if you're going the online option, even if you're using software that takes videos of students while they're doing the test, that also requires extra time on the professor's part to go through all of that. And as I said, that does raise privacy concerns. A lot of faculty simply are not comfortable with that, but if it's a choice between that and academic integrity, well, that's a tough choice to make.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Cross. Other questions?
Mr. Chair, this is trustee Lawson. I just have a question for Dr. Leicher.
Certainly.
Thank you. Dr. Leicher, is this something that was an issue before COVID, or has COVID really shown that there are some weak points that we can strengthen?
Well, I think there were, are you talking about the testing center in particular or assessment generally?
I guess there's a lot of concerns... I guess there's a lot of concerns that the faculty are coming forward. It sound more around the testing. So if there is a two-part answer to this, then I'm open to that.
So I think prior to the testing center, there were, there were problems there in that there seemed to be a rush, especially we can leave open these windows for students to take the exams during large periods of time. But students being who they are, typically they will wait until the last day and it it result in long lines outside the testing center door and it resulted in a lot of work for the staff. We acknowledge that there are problems there and we have some faculty representatives who were on a task force. That were putting some measures in place that as far as I knew was leading to some progress. When the campus went into pandemic mode, of course, face-to-face testing was no longer an option. And so we started experimenting more with online testing. And then that gave rise to the privacy problems that I mentioned in my remarks. And we're not the only ones who are noticing this. There are all kinds of ways to scam the system and many ways students are more tech savvy than, than the faculty are. And consequently, it's turning testing into a kind of game by which, how do you figure out the most effective way to cheat? And I don't want to cast all students with the brush of dishonesty. But I mean, if, if one is, is successfully getting grades that they didn't deserve, then that's too many. And what we would like is an institutional commitment to help us crack down on it.
But do you find that this is more specific to just our college or are you finding that this is also something that other colleges are experiencing around the country?
I can't speak to other institutions' testing centers, but I know the whole issue of academic honesty and testing is a nationwide, probably a worldwide phenomenon. We are far from alone in that.
Thank you, Dr. Liker.
But Dr. Liker, this is, is this the first year when we went from the 16 week semester to the 15 week semester?
Yes.
I, I remember when that, when that decision was made and it was part of the reason was that would put us consistent with other institutions of higher education. I don't remember hearing that it was going to be a problem with the amount of content we could teach. It was partly so at the end of the semester, we would have time so faculty weren't in three or four days, having to grade hundreds of exams or essays. Is this, is this something that we, we could have anticipated and didn't?
No, there, there were at least two divisions who did articulate problems with the 15 week semester and did express concerns that the type of content that needed to be covered in their gatekeeper classes. That it was going to be a real strain to be able to do that in 15 weeks. How much those voices influenced the final decision? Probably not, but those voices were certainly heard.
Again, I don't know at what level they were. I don't remember hearing that at the board level, but that was part of my concern at the time was everybody's going to 15 weeks. That seems like we're losing some opportunity for teaching time, but I, I think, I think the discussion has been good and Dr. Bound has, has made his position clear. So unless there are other questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Jerry, trustee Cook. I guess my expectation is that we have the online learning advisory committee, which is a broad based committee from several departments and several divisions. We have a commitment from the president and administrative staff to resolve this. My expectation is that, that good sense will prevail and, and we will make decisions that will support the integrity, the academic integrity of the college and will help students get through this difficult time and at the same time be of assistance to the faculty. I, I know this is really difficult for the faculty. It is a nationwide issue. The Wall Street Journal's had a number of articles about higher ed integrity and testing during this pandemic issues. So my expectation that all of those resources, Dr. Liker, will come together and will make good decisions as as we have in the past for the students and, and the faculty of our college maintaining academic integrity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Dr. Liker. Appreciate your time. Next is a report from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle, trustee Cook. Cross, trustee Cross, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the research triangle met on October 26th by a Zoom. I know you'll be interested to know, Mr. Chair, that the K-State Laitha will retain its, its status as the next place to host a physical meeting. But we met on October 26th, 7:30 AM. Mayor Peggy Dunn hosted the meeting as chair. And we discussed approval and updates of the budgets for K-State Laitha, KU Edwards, the KU Medical Center facilities we have in, in Johnson County. We also had an update on the public relations work that we do on behalf of Jcert along with the discussion of vacancies on the board. We have received information that despite the pandemic, that our revenues are up about 1% on the year. And about 1.2 million over from October of 2020 compared to October 2019. So despite the pandemic, we have still had revenues holding strong or steady anyway. Perhaps at a loss with inflation, but balanced better than, than frankly, I expected in, in watching these numbers. And so, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report and I would stand for any questions or sit.
Greg, you're muted.
Thank you. I'm trying to mute between so that I don't inadvertently add something to the conversation, but we'll move on to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, trustee Ingram, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I really just have an announcement regarding our next meeting, which will be another Zoom meeting, our final meeting of the year. This is our quarterly meeting on Saturday, December the 5th. And we are in the final stages of planning the agenda and that will be sent out to the community college liaisons of presidents in the next day or two, if they have not already received that from Heather. So that is my report regarding KACC T this month.
Will that, will there be an invitation to other trustees to participate in that remote meeting on December 5th?
I believe so. It goes to the president. And typically, and I think probably because we have been zooming throughout the year. It has been sent to the president and then the, the liaison from each college. But we can, we can get that information out if people are interested in attending that.
I think that'd be a good idea. Thank you. Questions for trustee Ingram?
Mr. Chair, Jerry Cook?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Ingram, I would appreciate a comment. Mr. Carter's presentation, he said that Kabor was surprised that KACC T has taken a position against the, the potential legislation of community college merger. Do you have a comment about that?
Well, I, I think the, the response that I have, Kabor evidently met yesterday and I did hear from our executive director late yesterday regarding that. Just to let me know that that communication had been delivered as though we had not made a statement against it, which in fact I did. So we will have discussion on that tomorrow. Jerry, I really don't have anything to respond. It's, it's very confusing and I think that's, Mr. Carter shared that as well. I, I read a statement. I made it very clear where our stand was on that. So to consider the fact that it really wasn't considered is alarming to me, but I, I don't have anything else to add at this point.
Thank you.
But trustee Ingram, is, is it fair to say that the community college merger legislation is directed at those smaller colleges throughout the state? As opposed to a direct impact on Johnson County Community College?
That would be my understanding, although, you know, we were kind of told during this whole future of higher ed meeting. The sessions that that was really not something that they were interested in doing. So it's kind of a twist of events in my, is my impression of it. So again, you know, I apologize. I just caught wind of it last night. It was clearly not the position that we took. So I'm, I'm really frustrated with how to respond because we made it very clear what our, what our situation was. Yes, Greg, I think you can probably anticipate that that's the case. But I'll just leave it at that for right now. I'm sorry.
Thank you. The next report is on the foundation. Again, trustee Ingram.
Yes. This is one I look forward to. The foundation's executive committee met on Tuesday, October 27th, and the foundation's executive investment committee met on November the 10th. Both meetings were held virtually and the foundation's next board of directors meeting will be held on January 20th of 2021. The Beyond Bounds 2020 and Vision Auction benefiting the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art was held on October 24th. 140 artists contributed more than 190 works that were available to online bidders. 474 individuals from around the county registered and participated in the online event. Celebrating the 30th anniversary of art on the JCCC campus. Beyond Bounds 2020 set a record with gross revenues from artwork sold, sponsorships and donations exceeding $314,000. Proceeds from the event will support the Nerman Museum's continued efforts to bring world-class contemporary art and art education to our community. Special thanks to the national and regional artists who contributed fabulous pieces of artwork for the online auction. The patrons who bid on and purchased the artwork and our wonderful sponsors. I'd also like to take a moment on behalf of the foundation to thank and recognize Bruce Hartman. As most of you know, Bruce is retiring at the end of this year. Beyond Bounds was also to be a celebration of the tremendous impact and legacy that Bruce has had here at JCCC and on the art community locally, nationally, and frankly, around the world. I want to express my sincere appreciation for all of Bruce's efforts and there will no doubt be more details to come on how our community can say thank you to Bruce for his work as he enters retirement. The foundation's Some Enchanted Opportunity Campaign benefiting student scholarships and student basic needs is entering its final stages. More than $750,000 has been raised to date with 100% of those gifts supporting student scholarships or student basic needs programs such as Meal Share and our Basic Needs Center. I want to again, thank everyone from our community, including many of my fellow trustees who have stepped up during these unprecedented times to support our students. I encourage any who are still interested in learning more to visit www.jccc.edu/. And lastly, speaking of thanks, I did want to call special attention to an effort led by the foundation in recent weeks. Many of you are familiar with the phone naffons. In fact, most of us have all probably gotten calls from our alma maters on a regular basis. The foundation with assistance from nearly two dozen JCCC student ambassadors and a dozen more foundation volunteers and staff volunteers recently contacted more than 350 donors to simply say thank you. This thinkathon was met with tremendous appreciation, especially during these times we are all struggling to stay connected. I want to personally thank everyone who took time to make these phone calls and to brighten the day of so many in our community. So I'm sure many of you on this Zoom this evening received those phone calls and I know there was an appreciation. I know I had a call from a student. Talked to her just a little bit more about herself and how she ended up at JCCC. And just had a really good conversation about her, her navigating through our college and her appreciation of everything that everyone does at Johnson County Community College. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I, I received a voicemail from a student and I'm so sorry I missed it and there was no number to call her back. And your, your immediate reaction is kind of to grab your wallet or your purse, but it was simply a very nice thank you. And I, I give Rob Ryrick credit for coming up with that or whoever came up with that and pulling it off because it's, it was very nice to receive that. I also noticed on my calendar, Saturday night was Some Enchanted Evening and it all reserved and it reminds us that things are very different this year. Not just in those kind of fundraisers or celebrations, but all aspects of life. So other questions, trustee Cross?
Yes, I, I too got a call and I greatly appreciated it. It caught me off guard. Thank you. I was like, is that it? You know, like you're welcome. And then Bruce Hartman, Bruce Hartman was you know, truly a gem of humanity and when I first got elected and was nothing to nobody and certainly no threat to bid on anything at any auction. Bruce Hartman gave me the time of day and my wife and I appreciated us and and whatever we contributed, I, I, we've done the best we could, as I know we all have, but Bruce Hartman really, I think to his, his brilliance and ability to acquire and, and develop assets. I think it goes to the core of his humanity. He was just a good person who would be nice to everyone and saw value in you, no matter who you were. And I, I, I will miss him personally. So I just want to comment on that and thank you, Mr. Chair.
I suspect we will have a chance to say farewell to Bruce in, in another fashion as we go forward, move toward, I think his retirement.
I thought that's why I laid it all out.
Well, somebody may tell me differently. I thought he was retiring June 30th, but it may be 1231, but it, either way, your, your comments are absolutely appropriate. As a tribute to Bruce and his contributions to the, to the college. Others, questions on the foundation? If not, we will move into the committee reports. The first committee report is the audit committee. The members of the audit committee are the chair and vice chair by our rules. That's myself and, and Vice Chair Snyder. We met on November 5th. A large portion of our meeting was to review with our outside auditors at Reuben Brown. The audited financial statements for fiscal year 2020 that ended on June 30th. Reuben Brown not only does the financial audit, it does prepares our 990T form for the IRS. They've announced their, they will issue an unmodified opinion, meaning there are no problems that they were able to identify with respect to the normal financial statements. The money we received through the CARES Act as part of the pandemic relief passed by the federal government. The guidelines are not yet out from the Office of Management and Budget, so those will be audited at some point in the future. We will have to ultimately show that audit to the federal government to demonstrate that we spent the funds as they were intended. Reuben Brown also audits the finance, the foundation as a separate entity from the college itself. They had, we started this process with a planning and scope meeting back in May of 2020. Another item that they were, they were audited this year for the first time was our, the Retirement Benefit Trust Fund, which is the fund that was created under the voluntary entire voluntary employee retirement benefit. The VER program to allow folks to retire early and take their unused sick leave and vacation time and place it in a health trust that they could later use for medical expenses. So that is a new item that they will, they will be auditing. One of the things that I always like to hear is that in management disclosures, they indicated that the disclosures were all neutral, consistent and clear. And that they had full cooperation and no issues whatsoever with respect to management. This year, the audit was conducted virtually as opposed to them coming to campus and walking around offices and hallways. So that was different. I, I assume Rachel is probably on the call, but if you have specific questions, I'll try to answer them or Rachel or Dr. Bound can. The action we need to take tonight is to accept the recommendation of the audit committee. That the board of trustees accept the administration's recommendation to accept the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020, and I will make that motion and then we can have a discussion if there's a second.
Okay.
Moved by Musall and seconded by trustee Snyder. Is there a discussion about the acceptance of the audited financial statements for the last fiscal year? If there are no questions, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? All opposed, no. That motion passes six to zero. The audit committee also heard about the audits that are ongoing. One is with respect to our capital projects construction. As you know, we've had a great deal of construction on campus over the last three years, and our internal audit and advisory services group will audit those construction projects. They're also auditing our accounts payable department as part of our internal review. We had a report on the mission continuity update from Dr. Sandra Warner. Things that were started a year and a half, two years ago to figure out how we handle things in a, in an emergency. I think it's fair to say we were thinking more in terms of tornado, IT hacking, other types of natural disasters. But those preparations have been very helpful during the pandemic. We also heard an update on the athletics audit that was reported earlier this year, and the many changes that have been done in the athletics department in response to those changes, some of which are ongoing. We heard the quarterly ethics report report. Ethics point is our, our internal ability to report items of concern by individuals, whether anonymously or by name. They range from human resources to ethics to financial improprieties. And there were, there have been 18 in 2020 through the end of September. There were 38 in the entirety of 2019. So we're probably a little behind the pace from the previous year, which is good. We reviewed the annual charter of the audit committee, what the audit and advisory services is intended to do. We looked at their audits planned for 2021. And we had a, an executive session to review progress in response to the audit of our information systems, planet, plans, programs, and software, including our cloud services. Those were held in executive session because our security processes for our information services are not to be disclosed to potential hackers. That's my report. Trustee Snyder, do you have anything to add?
No, you were very thorough. Thank you.
Any questions about the quarterly audit report? Hearing none, I'll move on to the, the next item is the collegial steering. Collegial Steering Committee met on November 10th. Trustee Snyder and I again appear as chair and vice chair. Dr. Bound and Dr. Weber were there for the administration. Dr. Leicher, Diane Davis from Faculty Association, and Aaron Prater and Jamie Cunningham from Educational Affairs. Discussions continue to focus on the role and function of the collegial steering committee in light of our new formats for shared governance, including the academic branch council, the college council, and the staff council. Consensus was to continue collegial steering through at least this academic year as those councils take more shape and it's determined how they will function and whether collegial steering is a, continued to be a, a necessary and promoted item. The faculty have made it clear that they believe collegial steering is an important function for the college board of trustees to continue. We agreed at our December meeting that for our December meeting, each member will try to bring one kind of big idea, something more strategic or visionary about the future of higher education, and one, I don't know whether to call it a smaller idea, but a lesser idea that could be accomplished at Johnson County Community College, still important, but not of the scope of the other one. So we'll see how that happens and whether we can continue those discussions then into 2021. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 8th at four o'clock PM. And we will intend to meet virtually again. I'd be happy to answer any questions about collegial steering. Hearing none, we'll move on to learning quality. Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Learning quality met by Zoom on November 2nd. Trustees Cross and Smith Everett were in attendance with a large number of staff and faculty. The first item was a report of a sabbatical by Doc. By the way, that whole report is found on pages five through eight of your packet. Dr. Mary Harmon gave a report on, she's a professor of biology and biotechnology, gave a report on her sabbatical. This is another area that really, I think, positions Johnson County Community College well. The detail of a report was several pages long. But as you can see, the objectives were to conduct laboratory rotations with four different industry partners, assess skills, and, and use common competencies or unique or specific positions of projects within that company. So her sabbatical really was part of a larger project as well in that to further tie our relationship with industry. I, I believe all of you know that biotech is an emerging career path in our country, particularly it positions Johnson County Community College very well because between Manhattan, Kansas, and Columbia, Missouri, a large percentage, I, I, I know it's over 50% at one time when I was busy with the convention and visitors bureau, we, I think it was over 60% of all of the biotech activity takes place in the world, takes place within, within that region I described. And so this, this is really an emerging opportunity for our college. Dr. Harmon is really well-versed and is developing, continues to develop great partnerships with our four-year partners at K-State, KU, UMKC, is involved with middle school coursework. New coursework will be emerging for middle school and high school students, and just really a very exciting report that she gave. Our next item was a report on environmental science by Doctors Mary Wiskerta and Dr. Deb Williams. The thing that struck me about this report was the commitment that students have, our, our students at the college have to make a difference. And this whole issue of environmental studies certainly receives a lot of national attention. But what isn't in that paragraph of report that's in front of you are, and for the benefit of our audience, certain program pathways include climate change science, conservation science, environmental humanities, environmental justice, environmental security, food and agriculture, geospatial analysis, indigenous, indigenous studies, land and use planning, water and soil resources. And, you know, it goes on, but the commitment that our students are having with these applications is really, is really exciting. And Mary Wiskerta and Deb Williams both gave a great, great report on the work we're doing there. Dean Alyssa Waldman gave an update on the CE Ed Talks. The Ed Talks have really emerged as a result of the CARES funding and as a result of the pandemic. Another very exciting report, Ed Talks are offered weekly on Tuesdays or Fridays at 10:00 AM. They, I think we've had 42 of them so far. I'm not sure that that number is in your report. I'm looking at it here on my computer. But what's, what's exciting, I think, for the colleges, Alyssa has indicated that we've made great partnerships with chambers of commerce, with senior citizen retirement homes to provide these programs. They're, they're both for entertainment and, and academic hobby opportunities. And trustee Musa, you asked a great question of me when, when you got the agenda on this. What about the ones that have been held? And I'm, I'm told that they're working with our marketing department to make those available. We can access those on edtalks@jccc.edu. There will be a link. They think that'll be active in December. You can go on to that link now, edtalks@jccc.edu and get the, the schedule of the upcoming talks. But they'll also have the opportunity for those of us that missed those talks to be able to pick up the ones that have been held. And it's just a really another opportunity of how our college is reaching out to the community in these pandemic times. And I, I think the plan is to continue with these Ed Talks, even if we ever finish this, this pandemic situation. We then also had a report from Gurbeshan Singh on affiliation agreements. Sheila Mopin gave a report on another agreement with Ula School District. Those are in the consent agenda. We also had a report on some course fees that are going to be removed. We did not take action of those in learning quality. They will be part of the management committee meeting. And Doctor Singh just made us aware of those during learning quality. And I'll report more on those when we get to management. But again, if you have a chance to look at the learning quality packet, when you get that, some really great detail. Or again, another, many, many examples of our staff and faculty doing exemplary projects. And again, I want to emphasize that the student interest, the student commitment to make a difference in all of these areas is really commendable. I know that trustee Smith Everett is not on the call, but trustee Cross, if you have anything to add, that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, just briefly, I don't mean to rat out Dr. Jerry Cook, but I think he really enjoys learning quality. And I think that the, the report we got is just incredibly interesting. In my practice with, with farmers and environmental law, what our students are doing is at the forefront of, of the issues we see related to agriculture and certainly environment on, on the Great Plains and Prairie. So it was terribly exciting. And I agree with everything Dr. Cook said. And so I just wanted to comment and say, I thank you for your leadership, Dr. Cook. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation.
Other questions for Dr. Cook or trustee Cross about learning quality? If not, you reminded me, Jerry, that, that we ought to reference where it is in the agenda for folks. The audit committee is on pages one through seven. I forgot to do that when I was doing audit committee. We'll move on now to management committee. Again, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The management report is found on pages nine through 20 of your packet. The management committee, when did we meet? On November 4th via Zoom. And I believe that I was the only trustee. I think trustee Smith Everett and trustee Snyder. Looking at my notes here, if you were in attendance. But, but we had reports from Rob Yrick, Director of the JCTC Foundation. He gave his annual report regarding the foundation. I won't repeat that report as trustee Ingram gave a very good report of where the foundation is. Dr. Randy Weber, interim Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented information on several agreements with outside agencies. That can be found in the consent agenda on pages 38 through 40. Rachel Lear is Associate Vice President of Financial Services, provided the semi-annual update on our investment portfolio with the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. The detail of that is in your packet. Next was information on the proposed budget guidelines for fiscal year 2122. Recommendations for approval of the budget calendar and guidelines will be brought forward at our December meeting. She then reviewed five-year projection model of college finances. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the single-source purchase report and contract renewal report, which can be found on page 12. She also gave a summary of awarded bids between $50,000 and $150,000. That summary can be found on page 13. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services, gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects. This report is on page 17 of the packet. Mr. Hall also reviewed the report of the final status of facilities, master plan projects, which is on page 18. We do have some recommendations to present to the board tonight. The, the first deals with course fee changes for spring of 2021. It's what I referenced in the learning quality committee meeting. We had some fees that were being charged that we no longer will need those fees. Courses include HORT 15205, 220, and 265. Previously, this fee revenue was used to purchase student supplies, which are no longer required. Estimated total revenue from these course fees is approximately $2,000. So I really appreciate the, the sensitivity to if we don't need the fees anymore, let's, let's eliminate them. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees adopt the course fee changes outlined above effective with the spring 2021 semester, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Cook and a second by trustee Cross to approve the course fee changes outlined on pages nine and 10 of the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries six, zero.
The next item is the bid for HVAC improvements for various community college buildings. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from SGI in the amount of $160,715 for the ITC, GEB, COM, and LIB buildings with an additional 10% contingency of $16,071.50 to allow for possible unforeseen costs. And Strangler Industries in the amount of $170,500 for the HCDC building with an additional 10% contingency of $17,050 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for requests for bid RFB 21-021 HVAC improvements, various JCC buildings for a total estimated expenditure of $364,336.50, and I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by trustee Snyder to accept the recommendation. Five separate buildings, we are accepting the low bid from SGI on four of them, and the low bid for Strangler Industries on the fifth building, as found on your agenda on page 14. Is there any discussion regarding acceptance of those low bids? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. That motion carries six, zero.
The final, final recommendation is for instructor management software solution. That detail can be found on page 15 of your packet. This will be the first year of a four-year plan. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Course Maven, Inc. for the provision of the instructor management software solution for a base year of $58,925 for fiscal year 2020, 21, and a total expenditure not to exceed $205,113 for the optional renewals through 2025. And I'll make that motion.
Been moved by trustee Cook.
Okay.
Seconded by trustee Snyder to approve the committee recommendation down on page 15 for the bid for instructor management software solution from Course Maven, Inc. Is there any discussion or are there any questions?
And I will say, trustee Musa, that like we do in other long-term plans, those are renewable each year. The board, both, both parties have the option to renew those. But the plan is this would be the first of a four-year plan.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
John Clayton.
Sorry, trustee Cross.
I'm sorry. Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries six, zero.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Questions for trustee Cook on the management committee report?
No questions. I would just note that trustee Smith Everett and I were both in attendance at the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry about that, trustee Snyder.
That concludes the committee reports. We're now ready for the president's recommendations for action. The first item is the treasurer's report from our treasurer, trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The treasurer's report can be found in the board packet. I'm not sure of the page. The board packet includes the treasurer's report for the month ended September 30th, 2020. Some items of note include, page one is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. September was the third month of the college's 2021 fiscal year. An ad valorem tax distribution of $5,975,627 was received from the county treasurer in September and distributed as follows. $5,628,836 to the general fund, $324,754 to the capital outlay fund, and $22,000 and twenty two thousand, thirty seven dollars to the special assessment fund for a total of five million, nine hundred seventy five thousand, six hundred twenty seven dollars. An ad valorem tax distribution of one point four million was received in October and will be included in next month's report. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was eighty nine point five million as of September thirty, two thousand twenty. The expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the newly minted college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended September thirty, two thousand twenty, subject to audit. And I so move.
Okay.
Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Snyder. It is on pages twenty twenty one through thirty three of the board packet for those following at home. Is there any discussion or any questions about the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve it, subject to audit, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries six zero. Dr. Bound, your monthly report to the board, Mr. President.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for allowing me to present provide my monthly update to you. All right. Here we go. Can you see the screen? Okay. All right, I'm going to assume the answer is yes. So first of all, in breaking news, trustee Cook recognized in the learning quality report the work of continuing education in the work of their ed talks. And the breaking news tonight is that ed talks and our continuing ed team received the twenty twenty marketing award from Learn. That's the Learning Resources Network, a national organization recognized their fantastic work. It's a team effort. And certainly, what's most impressive to me is that this work is led predominantly by coordinators and administrative assistants within continuing education and specifically led by Nick Gonzalez. And it's just recognition of fantastic work that they're doing. And I encourage you to enjoy an ed talk in the near future. All right, in my report today, a couple of things, I want to talk about enrollment. I want to talk about our move, just a summary of our move to being more remote for the balance of the semester. Talk to you briefly about the strategic planning process and your role in that. I want to take the first time in the meeting to talk to you about our student success metrics and looking at generally five year trends and close with a report or an update for the board retreat on Saturday. As I'm moving into this report, I also would like to recognize Dell Lovett, who we've asked to serve as interim C I O. She has stepped into the role nicely and doing a great job out of the gate and appreciate her willingness to serve our college and the I S team. All right, so let's talk, let's talk some, I hate talking numbers all the time, but today I'm going to do a little bit of that. If you recall, at census date, we were at a minus twenty four percent in headcount and about eighteen percent down in credit hours. I'm pleased to say today that this week we're down seven percent in headcount and less than three percent in credit hours. This comes as a result of a lot of hard work by many, many people. And certainly heavily within the student success team, student success and learner engagement, look at recruitment and admissions team, financial aid, the Bursar's office. Sheila Mopin and the work that she leads in serving our high school partners. Faculty both in the high schools and the faculty that shepherd the work J C C C as well as our academic leadership. I know when you do that, you run the risk of leaving somebody out. But the good news is the team is working very hard to ensure that Johnson County students have the opportunity to learn and to pursue their educational dreams. And so I know that it's come at a lot of hard work to get us from minus twenty four to minus seven. And and our institutional effectiveness team, institutional research and planning team just does a great job at providing this data to us on a regular basis. So let's talk about about the balance of this semester. As as we all know, rates related to COVID continue to rise. The number of cases continue to rise and continues to place a greater impact on our community. And so in doing our share to positively contribute to moving forward as a community and ensuring that we can successfully complete our semester. We've we've made, as you know, a week ago announced that we would go more remote for the balance of the semester. Last week, we provided an update or an announcement to the campus community. Another update will go out tomorrow morning. Both faculty, staff and to students, and you'll be aware of that, you'll receive that tomorrow morning as well. We've been eighty twenty in terms of our split of various firms of forms of online instruction and twenty percent face to face as we close out this semester between now and and the end of the semester, it'll be closer to a ninety ten. When when we think about the classes, it was a very intentional move. And again, I'll look to our academic leadership to our faculty in in setting up this semester for success in going back and and looking from the very beginning of if we can pull as much of the hands on portion of classes that require the in person participation on campus to move as much of that as feasibly possible without compromising the excellence of instruction, moving that forward allows us as we move forward now to be much more remote. And it's taken a ton of work to get to this point. So we'll be about ninety ninety ten with the remaining classes on campus. The sorts of examples of and and I had an interview today and and, you know, shared that, don't quote me exact, I'm going to talk with broad sweeping categories here. And reminded students, if you have questions, you contact your professor about whether your class, if you don't know yet, if you're in person, if you've been in person and if you're going to be remote or in person moving forward, you need to connect with your faculty member, your professor. But courses and programs like in our healthcare programs, for example, dental hygiene. The work that they're doing in the in clinical setting, both in terms of the work that they do in the mobile lab as well as here in in our campus. Those sorts of programs are skilled trades, speaking to HVAC, electrical and so forth, our welding classes. There are some of these courses that you need to continue to to the to the end of the semester with that that hands on learning experience. So that's the shift from an academic standpoint. Services are moving predominantly remote. Computer labs, we will continue to have computer labs open on campus, but there will be fewer labs open on campus. But the labs that students need in order to access the technology, so if they need to come to campus to be successful in their course and utilize one of our computer labs, we will have labs available for the courses that they're taking. The academic resource center will be open, but operating, if I understand correctly, by appointment only. And as of now, as 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 we look to spring, our sites are on an eighty twenty mix again. But right now, we're speaking about the balance of this semester. If we shift now to strategic planning, we have partnered with Parker Communications Group and Morningstar Communications to help us move through this process. As you know, we did wrapped it up about a few weeks ago, the mission vision values survey work of folks across the campus community, asking them for feedback on that. Parker Communications is taking that information and identifying the themes in that for us and will bring us back to us for the strategic planning council and cabinet to take the first crack at mission vision values statements moving forward. Maybe they'll stay the same, maybe they'll be completely different, maybe they'll be somewhere in between. But that group, that work will happen, will be a chance for faculty and staff to provide feedback and and on as well. We'll be asking for your feedback as well. And we'll bring that to you for consideration and your feedback. So it won't be a done deal at that point. We won't ask you to approve anything until we've got a plan to move forward in totality. But wanting you to know, in January, you'll see mission and engage with us around mission vision values. In February, it will be around the SWOT analysis. Again, we are choosing to train internal facilitators to lead our groups across campus somewhat in December and in January to identify the internal strengths and weaknesses and the externals, external opportunities and threats as it relates to us as a college, again, iterative process strategic planning council and cabinet, campus and your engagement in this work as well. As we look at the development of goals, we'll take that information from the SWOT analysis, mission vision values, the environmental scanning work that's being done and from all that facilitate sessions and and prepare draft goals. Come that iterative process with the campus community come with you and engage with you in April, which will lead to draft strategy work which comes to you in May. And then the plan is for the plan to come to you in its totality. At least from a mission vision values, goals and strategies come to you for adoption consideration in June. Moving on quickly, an update on metrics. You would have seen these either as metrics or K P I's in the past. And so I want to run through, these are the student success focused metrics. So in this, first of all, course success rates. These are all passing grades, so A, B, C and P for passing grades divided by the number of enrollments. So number of students enrolled, and there you calculate a percentage. The good news is we're almost at target, that kind of light blue line, second from the top is the target line, eighty percent. We were a fraction of a percent off. I think it was seventy nine point six two percent course success rates. That's above the the our peer groups at kind of the fiftieth percentile, whether we look at kind of our our peer group as well as national numbers, fifty belows us, fiftieth percentile is below us. Seventy fifth percentile, when we look at national statistics, not just the peer group, which is often suburban and metropolitan, larger community colleges. When you look at the total pool nationally, the numbers are actually a little bit higher, so that will stretch us. Course success rates. In addition to that, if we look at, if we kind of break down then by full time students and part time students, again, if we look at cohort success rate, so this isn't core success rate, this is overall success. So this is a combination of graduation rates and transfer rates. And so those two percentages get combined or those two numbers get combined to give you a sense of of where we are. The target's fifty percent, again, that light blue line, you'll see fall thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. For full time students, we look at a hundred and fifty percent of the time to completion. So if it's a two year degree, right, the theory is that's two years, we use a three year. So the cohort starts, if we look at the last number, the last dot on the right, that's fall of seventeen. That's the comparison for a fall of seventeen to the nineteen twenty academic year. We slipped a little bit this past year. Part of that, the data would lead you to that being related to COVID, that we saw the number of students that dropped courses in the spring semester has impacted that. Nonetheless, we had an upward trajectory prior to this past year. If we looked at it, part time students, there's a green smiley face across the bottom of the chart. That is us. The the threshold is thirty percent, the goal that we're looking for. We popped above that this year. Thank you very much. Again, remember, this is now for part time students, it's not a three year cycle, it's a six year cycle. And so these would be students that started in the fall of fourteen. You know, what percent have either transferred onto a four year school or graduated in that period of time? And so the good news is we're trending upward there. That's a history of a lot of work there. In addition to that, if we look at now, we looked at rates of completion and transfer, now we're looking at at raw numbers. And and specifically those students who are completing, earning a credential. We're, we were at twenty nine eighty seven this past year. You'll see on on several of these slides that the the comparables for for either the peer group, any of our peer groups don't carry over here yet because we don't have that data yet. But we know where we stand relative to where we want to be. Obviously, as I referred to, graduation rates slipped some in the last year. The number of graduates left again, heavily influenced by by COVID. We were down about a hundred and fifty graduates over the previous year. And the target is short of thirty two hundred. We're above the fiftieth percentile here and almost to the seventy fifth percentile. We're making progress there. But there's more more opportunity here. If we we talk a lot about credit students, but what about our continuing ed students and how are they doing? Often, the work here particularly in continuing ed has a tendency to follow the economy. The the twenty twenty numbers, this year's numbers are an academic, excuse me, a calendar year metric. The others are not, they're an academic year metric. This one is a calendar year metric. And and it dropped off significantly. Why did it drop off significantly? It dropped off significantly somewhat by the economy and frankly, heavily by the impact of COVID and the impact on our ability and the way we can deliver courses this year. So that's non credit awards. If we take a look at enrollment, there's no surprise on this chart here, I don't think to any of you. We've we've seen a decline in recent years. This is an area of focus that that we need to reverse this trend. And so, you know, certainly last year's you know, overall credit enrollment was just sort of twenty eight thousand. The goal was due to be just under twenty nine thousand. That the comparables here in this one, to me, they don't mean as much because we're larger than most community colleges. So three percent dropped last year over the previous So 3% drop last year over the previous year and 4% off of target. If we look at continuing ed, again, this shouldn't be a surprise based on what I've been presenting to you today, that the, the continuing ed enrollment is not where they want it to be. And yet, the team performs very well. If you look at it from a business perspective, financial perspective, they're doing a really good job in managing through this situation. So those are the the metrics that I wanted to share with you, and I'll stop in just a second for questions. Very quickly, want to talk about the board retreat this coming weekend, Saturday, 9 to 3. I'm going to say casual attire is appropriate. And so I'll let you decide what casual attire means. I know our facilitators aren't, Ken told me he's not going to show up in a suit and tie. So there you go. Friday morning, tomorrow morning, you will receive an email around 8:30 from Terry with the agenda for the retreat, as well as login for a polling tool that we're going to use called Poll Everywhere. And you'll receive the directions in how to log in, set up your login there. About an hour later, you'll get an email from Ed Lovett that will send you the link that you'll need to log in and set up your password and so forth. You'll want to log in with your JCCC credential. So for me, it's my name at jccc.edu. You know what yours are. And then tomorrow afternoon, either Caitlin or Shelby will check in with you just to see if you've had a chance to log in and, and get the, it's coming soon screen. They'll just check in to see if you, if, if you're having any challenges in getting logged in. Saturday morning now, let's go to Saturday. We'd ask if you could arrive between 8:30 and 8:45, so we can make sure you're logged in to Poll Everywhere so that we can do the polling. There are some things we're going to ask you to vote on or to rate, is probably a better way to say it. We'll have snacks, beverages, lunch provided. Everything will be individually wrapped to meet our requirements on campus and to do our best to ensure a safe, enjoyable experience for you. A reminder, Saturday morning, please take your temperature before you come in. And when you approach the building, you'll notice that one of the things that we've done is that when you walk in the door, there's a temperature reader there. You hold your wrist up to it, it'll take your temperature. And if you like, do it like I did this morning, it will say, "Normal temperature, please proceed," or something along that line. You should have received a little while ago, the information about the KACC report evening, event, meeting, whatever, on December 5. And you should have also received an email appointment from Kelsey regarding the executive session that will begin shortly. With that, what questions do you have for me?
I'm going to go through the trustees by, in order again with, let's go the reverse order and start with trustee Lawson. If you're ready, Angeline, if you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions, but as I go back through the slides, I am just very delighted to see consistency in the measurements for the years that we are measuring, but also the Liker Scales, the years, the, just even acknowledging that the years have changed. Talking about academic year versus calendar year, I think that's very important. And I just feel a breath of fresh air in seeing the consistency of actual data. So thank you so much.
Trustee Cook. Questions?
No questions.
Trustee Ingram?
No questions. Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate their report. Would you mind telling us exactly what the little voice will tell us before we enter?
No, I'm sorry. It was a one-time-only show. If, if your temperature is normal, it will tell you that. And if it's not, I think a cage will drop on you. But I'll let, I'll let Dr. Weber correct that if I'm wrong.
Okay, trustee Snyder?
No questions. Thank you.
Two things that I might mention. Thank you for the update. And it's good to see the metrics or key performance indicators and to know that they're not only recorded, but they're evaluated and analyzed. And we, we take pains to explain why they're up or why they're down and what we're doing right and what we can do better. Two things I noticed on there, Dr. Bound, on your strategic planning timetable, all the dates were 2020, and I want to make, clarify for everybody, those are 2021 those planned dates.
Yes, they should be 2021. I'll correct them for the record.
That, the other thing is that you'd mentioned 29,000 credit students, and I think most of us use 18 to 19 per semester, but we have different, and number of individuals are 29,000. I don't want to, it threw me for a minute because I usually say 18,000 to 19,000 credit students, but for the year, including fall, winter, spring, and summer, we get 29,000 different individuals.
That's correct. That's an annualized number.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Very thorough. A new business, I'm not aware of any new business. Not aware of any old business. That would take us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a compilation of items that have been reviewed and recommended by the administration or reviewed and recommended by committees. They're usually handled in a single motion and vote. Any trustee has the right to pull anything off the consent agenda that, that they would like to and have it considered separately. Are there any items any trustee would like to remove from the consent agenda tonight? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Moved by trustee Snyder and seconded by trustee Ingram to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, or no? That motion carries unanimously. We do have an executive session tonight, as I alerted to you two on Wednesday or Thursday, Tuesday or Wednesday. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel on a pending administrative personnel claim deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. This executive session will last for 15 minutes and will begin at 6:45 PM and end at 7 o'clock PM, at which time, open session will resume in the main Zoom seminar, in the main, main Zoom video conference. We'd like to invite Dr. Andy Bound and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. You will have received another link on your email during the meeting here to the separate Zoom session. You'll need to leave this one, sign into that one. And we will start that at 6:45 PM. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Snyder and seconded by trustee Cook. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, Snyder moved and Cook seconded. We will, if you will move to the Zoom executive session link as soon as possible, we will not start anything until 6:45. And we'll be back here at 7 o'clock. Thank you. We are back in open session at 7, I guess we've started at 7 o'clock, at 7:01 PM. I'm reconvening the meeting in open session. We had our 15-minute executive session, no action was taken. There's no other item on the agenda. I guess before I do ask for a motion for adjournment, I, I've meant to do this several times, and I think today's an example where we moved from a hybrid meeting to a, an all Zoom meeting in the space of about an hour to say special thanks to our IS and our AV support staff, Adrian, Derek, Jason, Mark, and others I'm sure I will miss. As Dr. Bound suggested, when you start saying thank you, but this doesn't just happen, it's the result of good work by good people who know what they're doing and who stay late to make this happen. So thank you all very much. With that, I think the other thing I want to say is we are in a, in a situation with the coronavirus with surges throughout this county and this state and this metropolitan area. And I would encourage people to do the simple things like wearing a mask, social distance, and keeping hy, your hygiene proper so that we can flatten this curve, not overload our hospitals, and ensure that our loved ones and us can spend next Thanksgiving and the following Christmas together as we would have typically. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cook, seconded by trustee Ingram, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carried. Thank you, trustees, for a good meeting. We are adjourned.